You could have made it all part of the plan.
I think so.
Sure. Now he's just gonna be outside.
I don't understand why you do.
Charter talks about harnessing absences and like if you take more than three then you're off. But these, they consider it a steal. That's the reason. This one did you.
We have to excuse them here. We have to excuse them.
And that's a hard job.
You did it too.
I always do it. I don't.
That's the day I walk in here and I just wanna say that every show has a lot.
Stand up. Stand up. That's the five, the five percent.
I still gonna protest.
Which makes it look like maybe we took three out and I gotta go find the three that came out before I make sure.
So, here, so all they say, email the files.
We have a provision that everybody.
Oh, I didn't ask. Oh, invited to get a fucking reclamation.
Well, I've been having, I've been having a little.
Oh, yeah, no, they've done a lot of work. Goes with the carpet. Yeah, there's no provisions. The reason being is. No. Without the meeting, the order, welcome everyone to the suit commission meeting.
Backline?
Here.
Appleby?
Here.
Doctor?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Simmons?
Now could be all right.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Marking changes in the agenda?
Mayor, we have a resolution excusing Commissioner Simmons. She's ill. And so you are able to take that whenever you feel comfortable.
Okay, we'll do some of the resolutions. The minutes from the 14 aren't quite ready yet. Tammy Wright, that time will be here. None of the special orders. Chief Haynes here?
I'm here. Hi, good to have Detective Sergeant David Glory. I'm at four three. It's an adjustment. So, David started with us in two thousand ten as an officer. And then he was promoted to a supervisor in twenty twenty-one. So, we had COVID and I had maternity leave and we didn't get an opportunity to introduce him to the community and the commission. So, now that he has been assigned detective sergeant, I thought it would be a good opportunity to bring him here and introduce him to everybody. Um, David, like I said, started this off in November of twenty ten. Um, he assigned two years with the narcotics team where he had a lot of investigative experience. Um, he was promoted to sergeant in May of twenty twenty-one. And then detective sergeant October thirty-first of this year. He graduated from Ferris State in two thousand nine. Some of his assignments are that of field chain officer, radar instructor, is a member of our honor guard. And he serves on our hiring. He has received two, first saving grade, first saving award. Um, department awards of merit and last year was the twenty twenty-one leadership award. Dave enjoys a lot of outdoor power sports, civil feelings. Five by five. There's, there's snow out there. Pretty excited about. Um, and camping with his wife. So, already he's taken how many training courses and active interest for the payroll?
Uh, I think, I think it's six so far.
So, he's jumping in and getting ready to go with the investigation. Some of, um, some of his responsibilities that are different from, um, being a sergeant are that he's gonna have to oversee the investigation, um, unfortunately, are needed, so. I'm sure those are all known. So, thank you for coming, everybody. Um, if we, I'd like to list everyone, there is a delicious pumpkin cake package to offer. Celebrate this, because we have been for a day, so.
Do you guys get story cake?
I got, I got a sandwich and I need anything in cake.
Who's all going?
Enjoy.
The stu-, the first study session is a welcome guest of Mark Sahki and Linda Eller. And they're going to talk about mechanic street, which is finished, other than no holes on, on that end of it. Beautifully paved, the sidewalks are done. We have a couple of poles to move, it looks like, which we loaded on a while back.
Mayor, while they're getting ready, I can inform the commission that I did get help from Patrick Heath today, that they got, they received the last easement that allows the poles to be moved. They just did today.
So, it's time to move, go to a pole stops. Welcome, Mark and Linda.
Thank you. We'll make this quick so we can go have some cake.
Little pumpkin for you.
Well, anyway, so, we just wanna give you an update on what the progress is. And we have some actual pictures of the, uh, that we paved. No, we're just, so, just from here to here has been paved. And so you'll see that on these pictures coming up. I don't know if you've had a chance before.
So, this is what it looks like in September.
Remember, that was a two-track over there. Then we put a gate to keep the ATVs out and the, uh, stragglers out of the, the bonfires. So, that was before the final course. That's just one course, but that was two weeks ago, I think. Scott was busy, Lauren Star was having a pretty involved conversation, so I didn't get a chance to talk to them. But, uh, they're on schedule and it really looks good.
So, there's one of the poles that have to be moved on the right there.
Don't, I think it's going that way, where the sidewalk's not complete. That's going north. So, that shouldn't have been the issue, right, Lauren?
No, it's farther, farther north.
Oh, further north?
Yeah. I, I think it is. It's a bit, pretty nice to the curve.
Well, you can see on the sidewalk.
Yeah, there.
Oh. That's what we, that's the one, yeah.
And I think that's the other pole that's too close to the, for snow piles and that one's gotta be moved. But that is in the works now?
It is, it is.
So, non-issue, Mark.
Solve problems. So, it really looks good, too. Um, so, we just wanted to talk about our strategies, strategies for building houses. So, we reply to the Fremont Area Committee Foundation, the mayor, the public, that we've done this. Um, so, we've asked, uh, for some money from their program-related investment fund, which they offered, if we have this, if we're interested, uh, because the Casa Cana Community Foundation is affiliate, an affiliate member of Fremont. So, we asked for a million to build four houses. Our match is going to be the fifth house. And then we asked them for down payment assistance, up to fifty thousand per house, if necessary, to make it affordable. So, and we start talking about this, but there's a lot of unknowns out there. And these, this is our strategy right now. This is what we're looking at. But, you know, the hurricane was that due to material supplies. I heard there's, um, there's a shingle manufacturer that's working twenty-four seven for the next eighteen months just to produce shingles for four. Is that gonna impact our ability to get material and OSB again? So, I mean, we have to, when we start construction, I mean, it'll be a little bit more clear, but, uh, we just don't know what it's gonna do to prices right now, where that's gonna end up, so. Um, we've been back and forth with them. Uh, they're gonna come out to the site, I think, for a month. They'll be soon. They wanna see the site. So, I feel pretty comfortable that that's a, an opportunity for us. The next, uh, strategy that we are paving is this mish- mishda missing middle housing program, which is a pilot program. Um, that was, um, yeah, go to the other side. That explains it right there. So, uh, there was some ARCA money debt, fifteen million of, uh, ARCA money debt. The governor flipped side and the budget said we, they've heard us and there's this middle income, lack of housing. So, that's, that's this program. It's a pilot program. We were the first applicant to get in. So, I'll give them a lot of credit, 'cause she was working with the, uh, staff there every day here, kind of the game, that when there's one wrong, then it caught it. We need to correct that. We need to correct that.
I'm hoping it gives me a little crowning point.
Yeah, so, so we feel pretty good about this. So, part of this is really, it's a, they're providing a subsidy. So, that three hundred sixty-two thousand spread over five houses, like seventy thousand a house. So, that'll cover some of our costs and hopefully we can bring down sale price with some down payment assistance.
Seventy-two thousand a house?
A house. I think that is nearly equated.
Yeah, like seven million.
So, Isabel Bank is committed to the construction financing for us already. So, our goal is to do five, that's five with this program, five with the other program. And we hope that's gonna be as soon as we can, uh, start construction in the spring. So, what are we gonna build? I think that's the big question. That's a moving target still, but we have some thoughts. So, this was the first house we built on Brookside, so that's probably gonna be one of the model. It's a modest, uh, thirteen hundred square feet, three bedrooms, two baths, whole basement. And we always put a new grist one in the basement so that can be converted into another, if necessary. So, uh, that's probably, Mayor, roughly the size of house that we're looking at. We have another thought, but this is the interior of that house. So, um, we did a modular house two years ago on Fenn. We would, wish they had another pilot program with that.
Mishda mod.
Mish- mishda mod to quickly get housing productivity up there. They thought it was quicker using the modular program. We're not so sure about that. But, um, so that's a possibility for some of the houses. And then, here's another one we're looking at. And we think, uh, we're talking to some of the modular home people, what does it look like if we say we want five? Timing, price, can that be a more effective, uh, approach?
If it was ordered five right now, it would give us a really good deal and they would have, it would be ready by May. Which is way shorter timeline than a year ago.
That'd be on the basement or a slab?
On basement. You know on basement, yeah, on basement. Yeah, you would not know that that's a, oh, pretty bad house once it's set.
And she's lived there, I understand, they've been what, two years now? And she is still completely one hundred percent happy with that house, there's not any problem.
Yeah, that was the one that, that required the toll, city added and poor down. So, you know, that, so, a couple of, the, the real issues are construction costs. Can we do ten stick though home with the available contractors in the area? We're not sure about that yet. But in the next couple of months, that's gonna be some of the things we're gonna sit down with people, suppliers and builders, to see where we can end up. And see how the modular program will compare to this.
You're gonna general contract them?
We are gonna be the general contractor. So. That's it. So, that's kind of where we're at right now.
So, how do people qualify for, say, a fifty thousand dollar or more, uh, down payment assist? And this big middle housing, uh, how do they qualify to get that house?
Well, there would be some, on some of them, maybe some income restrictions. And it would be what they would, what they would require.
The lenders.
So, so to make, so let's say, not, not everybody may get fifty thousand. They may get ten thousand because they have down payment money. That money's gonna be secured by a second mortgage. You know, a non-payable second mortgage, it will be unpayable sometimes, typically on the sale of property.
So, it isn't a full giveaway?
It's not a giveaway. None of it's a giveaway. But it brings the affordability price down upfront. And that's, that's to protect the interests of the lenders, of the, of the funding sources, too. If somebody doesn't, you know, put this house in two years, it appreciates thirty percent and we're gonna take the gains and take the, well, we have to pay that back. What did I mention?
Yes, briefly. Did you guys talk about modulators and, and that after your planning commission this week?
Briefly, yes.
What's the gist behind what you're gonna talk about over time?
So, what, this conversation was more focused on manufactured housing. So, modular part of that kind of helping people understand the difference. Um, when the house went in on Bellevue, there were some questions and concerns from the, the general public about where manufactured homes are allowed and where they're not allowed in the city. And the short answer is that they're allowed anywhere with, they need to meet some requirements. Um, but because of those concerns, the planning commission is looking at those regulations in the ordinance, what state law says, what other communities do to see if there's other ways to regulate that, um, based on the concerns. And so they're just starting that process and, um, Miss Nasty is working with them through kind of moving forward what other communities do. And the planning commission is gonna deliberate whether or not to amend that section of the zoning ordinance, um, to address some of the concerns from the public. So, it was focused more on manufactured homes than modular homes. So, none of that conversation was really, um, kind of impacted just because these are all modular or psycho homes.
Thank you. And Mayor, I think they, they, the, the, what my perception was, was, uh, the, uh, manufactured house and the modular home. Manufactured house may not meet local building codes or the national building code, but the modular is always good.
I'm not sure the lender, the lenders.
And the lenders, yeah, and, and, you know, some communities are definitely, you know, they want stuff. So, I know Cadillac Adaş adopted the bulk of code, which manufactured housing didn't meet at the time, but the, but the modular home did. And I think that's maybe what all.
Uh, money from the foundation would be alone?
Yes, yeah, low interest. So, another strategy that we're talking about, so let's say, you know, we have to, we have to think about the down price, too. What if the economy, you know, what mortgage rates are ten or twelve percent, what are we gonna do? Then I think we need to look at some lease purchase options for people. And we're gonna have some conversations with the lenders close to.
We've done lease purchases.
And we've done lease purchases, too, that we lease for a year and credit the, uh, the payments for, towards a, uh, dumping. So, you know, at the end of the day, we're still gonna have houses. They're, they're gonna sell it away. I mean, I suspect they will, really, even if they follow that book, right, so.
And when the lot sells, the city will be reimbursed for that land price that we put in the water?
Yeah, we're, yep, yep, we're gonna, we're gonna figure that cost into the, I see.
Well, and hopefully, you, you will advertise that there's gonna be some lot. We know many people that wanna build their own lot.
We wanna trade back to it. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Questions from the commission or the public?
Thank you.
Can I still make the cake?
Strategic planning update by Paul Creedy, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is something that we try to do roughly quarterly, depending on how many tasks come through. The, um, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three strategic plan was adopted in April. And as part of that, there's a list of kind of one-year tasks to help us move forward toward meeting the goals of that plan. This is just an update on the projects that were listed in there, um, identified to be completed, assuming the line October of this year. Um, several of them were done. There was a clarifier rehabilitation of a large treatment plant. Those are fully completed, several road projects, training chestnut, um, Maple Creek, the rough avenue section, as well as mechanics. Um, the new city attorney search was concluded a little differently than I think was anticipated when the plan was adopted, but successfully, um, completed nonetheless. So, there will be a city attorney, which is great. And the lead service line replacement program, um, I found it really interesting. In the past year, we've done some exploration and some replacements. This year, instead, there was a focus just on the exploration. So, all of the unknown sites were explored this year. So, the city knows exactly how many need to be replaced and where they are. It puts them well ahead of the curve. In total, there are a hundred and twenty-four, as it's going here, there are less service lines that need to be replaced in the coming years. And then, I mean, everyone, now that it's darker, they even see the beautiful twinkle lights that went up downtown, um, and how nice those are. On the back of the, um, staff report, you'll see a number of projects that were not fully completed or delayed. Riverwalk repairs, um, discussion of, um, how to replace a conference center in town. The airport, um, low-led fuel tank got delayed due to, um, kind of funding with the extension that is hopefully still gonna happen and sale of land and what money is gonna be put forward, what they're. Hamlock Park, the phase one is mostly completed and everyone, I think, is well versed in the status of that, that, um, it got delayed for a few reasons, but will be completed in the spring. That phase one and phase two will start then as well. And some zoning ordinance changes also, um, were on the schedule and got delayed due to some concerns from the public. And those will be kind of addressed in future meetings and brought back at a later date. So, um, this again is just an information session, kind of keeping the commission up to date on staff projects for the goals that everyone agreed on. And, um, I'm happy to answer questions how I can. And not, not all of these are my projects. I compile all the information from my colleagues. So, um, Mike might know more about, if there are any questions about those projects.
Thank you. Questions? I wasn't involved with the replacement of the left service line. Who pays for that?
Are there a lot of grants?
No.
And things for water, nothing?
No, we have cash flowed that project today, Mayor, and I think that's our intention. The intention was to do the hundred and twenty-four in the summer.
But she said that was five hundred thousand?
Yeah, we have funded up over the Tarby's Inn. Yeah, we have funding left over the garbage and allocated for that, so that'll help towards that. But, um, it, it's difficult to know they're there and they're not really going out there. And, uh, you know, there are some communities that are having coal, loan, you know, maybe state funded lead service line replacement. Ours is not one of those, Mayor, so. So our, our water system has funded that today.
So, so you'll just random chip away at them or how do you, how do you decide, use the land?
No, I, the goal is to do a hundred and twenty-four next summer.
Oh, yes, the whole deal, the whole deal.
That's the goal, whether that happens and contractor availability and probably, um, maybe Mayor, uh, you worked with me when I was hearing, uh, Kit Karzakowski talk about, who, he's from Gerber Construction and, and he was referencing material delays for all those types of things and they're lengthy. So, uh, if we want to accomplish that next year, we're going to need to bid that out over the winter. Um, and that's, yeah, that's something we're working on.
And have you been bidding out the remainder of the, somewhat part?
That'll happen this winter too. Hasn't happened on this, that's January, February, we'll get that out on the street. Other questions?
Um, let's say that we need to acknowledge, and that this creepy, that this is her last commission meeting with us. She is, her last day of work here is next Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, yeah, no, twenty-seventh. I'm sorry. This week, I don't know what day it is. Okay. Um, and she's going to be applying for trade in the city of Martha. Our loss is their gain. So I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you, thank you, thank you to Paula. Uh, I was on the search committee that hired her and, um, even from the interview, before she even got started working here, Paula just exhibited nothing but enthusiasm for coming to work in Big Rapids. She has invested herself wholly in her job here. Uh, I know she's putting in the weekends as well as weekdays. She has gotten involved in community groups and she purchased the house here because I think she was looking to make it her home. Um, so I just want to say thank you to her for four years of dedicated, quality, committed work. Um, I'm very sorry to lose her, but I wish her all the very best in her new endeavors.
And our work is always very positive. Thank you. Other questions on the strategic plan? During the next, the next one, tax abatement policy, which was really nicely spelled out in writing in your paper, I thought.
Well, thanks to me and Mark Gifford that took what we had for the commission or the city's tax abatement policy and updated it. You are seeing the update version. I didn't give you the background or the previous version because this is somewhat streamlined and we did make an effort to make it a little more readable, to kind of flows, I think, a little better. Um, the policy guidelines that are in there are just that, those are guidelines. There is nothing in this policy that is a mandate to the commission. You know, this is not an agreement in advance to grant or deny any particular abatement. It's an outline of your policies that you can consider. Um, but the, the reality of tax abatements in Michigan through municipalities is very simple. The state authorizes tax abatements or incentives. Municipalities are authorized by the state to grant them according to state statute or rules. So we are really in the position of outlining policies for the municipality to consider tax abatements, which are given according to the statute. So it's a state law framework in which the municipality has the authority to grant abatements as described by state law. So then the policies we have here are really guidelines for you to consider and the team that looks at it, whether a particular request for abatement is good for the city. And that's what these policy items for, are for. This is not an exhaustive list, that's what it says. But if there is a policy comment, guideline or statement in here, or not in here, that any member of the commission thinks should be in here, that's up to you. Contact me, Mark Gifford or Tammy Gillis and we'll put it in. So this was not intended to tell you what they all are. It's more to give you a collection of the list from the older policy. And I shared with you policies from Grand Rapids, was the Traverse City in Ann Arbor? And I gleaned from those, I picked from those some of these that appeared below. Because it didn't make sense to just throw all of them in there. So I went through, sorted, put through the ones that you had before and then a couple that were, I think, a little better statements of those ideas from the other cities, gave you all of them combined, tried not to be redundant. But that still means it's open for you folks. If you read through this and say, oh, wait a minute, we need one more, please tell us so we can put it in for you before you act on it. This will come back before you for action to adopt it, not tonight, at a subsequent meeting. So there's still time. If any of you see, say, one of these policy items that you'd like to have expanded or modified, there's still time to do it. All you have to do is tell us. Toward the end, where it says annual visits and reporting, we cleaned that up. We had a prior list that I think was overly ambitious perhaps and maybe a little too restrictive on the industry. So in particular with regard to these annual written reports, um, I put in an option in the second paragraph. The city manager can waive the site visit upon receipt of a written annual report from the industry on investment, job creation, job retention and average wages and salaries. The reality of these, some years into them, I think is, and Mark may correct me if I've described this inadequately, but the reality is after a few years into one of these, the annual report and the visit becomes a bit mechanical. And the industry, it's not, it's not that they lose interest in it, it's just it's not very high on their list of things to do in the management of their business. So we kind of have to call and remind them, we're supposed to do a visit and we should get a report or something in writing. This streamlines it so the manager can let them know it's time for a visit. And oh, by the way, if you get your report in like you did last year, did a good job. You know what, if you don't need the visit, we won't need to make it, you can send in the report. And if you want to talk to us about it, sure, we'll come over, but you don't have to have the visit. So there's a little, uh, I think, credit to the local industries if they're doing a good job in submitting their reports and keeping track of the data to show us they've lived up to their end of the bargain. We don't have to go make the visit and they don't have to get ready for the visit just to go over the report. But again, if there are ideas from any of you that you'd like to add, you have to let us know and we can put them in. This doesn't padlock you to any particular outcome, however. You are still completely free as a city commission to grant or deny any of the tax, tax abatements that are sought by any industry. The sole exception to that being if it's one, that the application is made directly to the state, which is an unusual type that we don't see very often. I don't think I've seen one in my career that goes to the state first. That comes back, you still get the opportunity to vote on it, but there are, you'd be well advised to kind of do what the state tells you is the best, in best interest of the city. That's not in here because it doesn't need to be in here.
Do we have any active abatements right now?
We have a couple that are still winding down and I think we're within about three years of them all being done, but I don't have that update for you.
We haven't, we haven't had one in, in a number of years, Mayor, the most recent was the social security bill that I think expired this year. The number of them that are, when I say a number, maybe two or three that are right on the cusp. We will be, unless we get new applications, without any tax abatements for the first time in, I would go out all in and say many decades. We haven't had applicants recently, so.
My own sense of it, and I take it for what it's worth, because there's nothing official behind it, but my own sense of it is that we're probably likely to see another round of abatement requests from local industries. But it's because you build a building, you buy a bunch of equipment, you expand or contract technology changes, you go through the cycle and you have twenty years, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years. And there's going to be a need to retool, rebuild, buy and reorganize. So I, I would predict you're going to get a couple in the next five years.
Well, fully routing leaving a new company coming in is certainly.
So it's a good time to look at the policy, see if there's anything you want to do differently in it and then all we need to do is adopt it and have it. But I, I, you know, pardon me if I might ask, Mayor, Paula, is this part of redevelopment readiness as well?
Yeah, things are wrestling.
But not a, not on the list of things we have to do?
No, not that I'm aware of.
So the Goshen abatement was dictated from a law from the state?
In large part, the application for all of that from the state goes to the state, not to the local units. The local units get to vote on some piece of it locally if there's a tax abatement. But, uh, if that's a coordinated effort, it's really going to be an unusual situation in which the municipality blocks or tries to block at the state funding package. You can have your input a lot upfront, but not really. And then, you know, the state takes its action and then you kind of get direction on what you're supposed to do.
Questions?
Um, Mr. Williams, is there any particular process for determining the term of the?
The statutes give you the, the timeframe, meaning the maximum. And then there is discretion on the part of the commission for whether or not to give the entire timeframe. I think the industrial one, the max is fifteen years, that's what I remember working with the most. And over time, this is something that waxes and wanes. Over time, uh, there was quite a bit of discussion and opinion expressed about how the abatements aren't good for economic development in the long run and you might not want to do fifteen years or whatever the max is, maybe twelve. So there was a lot of discussion about trying to limit them in duration, cut them in half maybe. There's a lot of talk about five years being a healthier one. Give the abatement, but don't, don't make it go too long generally. And so in years gone by, we talked about trying to put those kinds of policies in here. I didn't. I thought those are too likely to produce internal combat and divisiveness over an issue not before you.
The Goshen got thirty, yes.
Yes. Right. Yeah, but I think that one has to be voted on locally to actually go into effect. If that vote doesn't happen locally, that's an example of one where the state makes its incentives and abatements known, conditioned on something done locally. So there is still a role for the municipality. It's not really in granting the abatement in that setting. But I didn't think those types of policy items right now would be appropriate to put in here. Uh, because they wouldn't, I, I just didn't think they would. We could try, um, if you have any that you'd like to put in like that, it's, it's fair game. This is up for the commission. So if you have some you want to put in, we could put them in there. I'll just emphasize though that in my experience, I worked on a couple of committees that tried to swing this one way or another in advance. And then you'd get a proposal and then I watched the commission agonize over whether they needed to follow whatever they put in their policy or state law or what the industry wanted. I'm not sure that, that helped too much to announce in advance what you'd like to do. But we could. I did not do that in here. More questions though, please.
Questions? Very much, thank you.
Yeah, I did notice a typo that also nobody has to email me about it. I'm page two, I have to have after MC director and a written annual report. So I'll fix that one, just in case anybody noticed it. For you, good eyes.
Public comment on related items on the agenda, public. Sir, please. Tell us who you are and where you live and use the mic to the hood.
Good evening, my name's Dan Hay. Um, been here approximately five years now. Retired after moving around with the military for forty-four years. Uh, originally from Nantucket County, where this is kind of foreign territory for me. You know, I used to read about Big Rapids in the paper. Anyway, uh, I live out on one Indian Village Road just off Hoover. So I'm outside of Big Rapids, so you know, I'm set like with teachers. I'm, I'm an avid bicyclist. And one thing I started doing, I said, you know, I don't see many activities for bicyclists, organized rides or whatnot. And so I thought, okay, so I came up with a name, I bounced, I bounced it off a couple of people. And I think I'd need the, uh, city's commission, it'd be the Big Rapids Dam Ride, uh, because it would go from, it'd also be a metric century and let people, the map was, figure that one out. Let's start up at Northern Park, go ride the trail a little bit, go by the remnants of the, the dam up on the north then. Ride through Ferris, try to show off a little bit of the Ferris campus. Ride down past, uh, Rogers Dam. Then, uh, head on over to Davis, across Davis Village, uh, into the Wagon County and then down Elm, cross over Hoover, or I'm sorry, that's where I live, Harding Dam. Uh, come back to Northland Drive, uh, I think by Molly, I'm still getting all the locations. There's a little dam there on the Little Muskegon River and then back into the city. And it would be approximately sixty miles. But again, because right now, I, I told people, I said, I spent all my money by going up to Elk Rapids and doing the Torch Lake Ride or go to Lima or Sutton Bay, go up there or Traverse City, the Ice Man Park. But I thought, why not have something here that brings money into, uh, Big Rapids and brings people into Big Rapids? And I know I'd have to, uh, do some communications with EPS and, but hey, you know, and, and County, um, and plus New Eagle County, but anyway, that's one thing I've been working on, uh, on the grassroots right now, trying to meet some of the people, like the Van of Locals and she sent me over to the, uh, visitor, the county visitors bureau. Nobody sent me to think with the city of Big Rapids. But anyway, um, that's one thing I have, that's, that's the thing I'm starting to work on. And hopefully, hopefully, within a year or two years, as we've been at this position. And it would be great to have a bike, a good bicycle shop, you know, this is, it'd be great to start, but then you have the new depot, which might have a bike shop in it, it's whoever. So that'd be great.
I don't think the city would have any trouble supporting that. Your new special events, uh, policy could be filled out and we, thank you. Sounds like a good idea. Coming at the visitors bureau would not fill in her hotel rooms too, I'm sure with.
Yeah, that, that's mentioned once or twice.
Yeah.
I, I spend my money for that, all these other places, so I thought, you know, you know, why not have a home event versus, you know, one game over?
Great. Marco, get on, I'm happy to work with Dan, I'm not that.
That's, that's an awesome idea, thank you.
Good idea.
You could tie it to the Dragon Trail too sometime. Um, these would probably be road bikes.
Oh, okay, different deal.
And I, and I, I do ride the Dragon Trail, I think it's great. Um, yeah. You know, I, I was stationed in Germany for about twenty-eight years, so it was great to walk outside my house, hop on a mountain bike or a road bike and just start riding. Here, it's kind of frustrating to say, okay, let me load the bike into the truck and go someplace so I can start my ride. The fat tire, it's about time I bring that one out of the shed.
Thank you for talking so much.
Other, over comment? When we start our general business, let's start with the resolution regarding Karen's absence. Is there emotion? A little more support here? Questions? Questions? I guess that's a little...
Backline?
Yes.
Backly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Next, a resolution approving a lease between City Big Rapids and the Klußmanns, who bought the depot.
Yes, uh, Mayor, you have a lease that was prepared by Eric and signed by Duncan and Marissa Klußmann, owners of the depot, as you spoke. The lease refers to a, um, Schedule A map, which was not in your packet. But that's at your table. The first one is really a depiction to show you where this property sits in relation to our park project that's coming up, um, later on the agenda. The second page is actually the Schedule, uh, A. And, um, so that, I just wanted to give you a reference of what we're talking about. The idea is to lease the parking area that's, that the Klußmanns own, just immediately west of the depot, and incorporate it into our Spark Grant application, uh, that would allow improvements being made to the parking lot. And then if the maintenance of it would be a responsibility of the cities. But the parking then would all be public from right at the road and all the way throughout the park development. So I think that'd be good just for overflow public parking, as well as creating a better sense of, uh, this is all one operation, whether, uh, when you go to the park, even though the depot is there, and we'll be thriving business, I'm sure. So, uh, this is a twenty-five-year, uh, lease that we can also renew, and I believe the term is a hundred dollars, or the rate is a hundred dollars.
It is.
Um, so we believe, Mayor, staff does, that this is a win-win for the city, as well as for the, the Klußmanns, the owners.
But I'm happy to answer any question. Did they request any number of spots?
Does they own their depot?
No, no, they're happy to, they all cover it.
Cool. Question? Is there a, uh, motion for the resolution to, uh, sign a lease with the Klußmanns for that park?
Support.
There's more, more questions?
Backly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. The next is, uh, carpet project for this room. Mark, um, the commission authorized funding to renovate this space, um, maybe a month or two ago. And our first step in that is replacing carpet, we're going to work on paint and audiovisual equipment and chairs and other things. But, uh, first step is carpet. We went out to bid, and we have three bidders. Uh, the low bid, boring in motion out of Ever to, uh, uh, middle or next is the Carpet Gallery, is local in, in town, off Bollman Street. And then Gilbert's is as well, and I see it says incomplete next to it. Um, we don't always recommend low bid, but, uh, staff has done that in this case. But it is certainly to the discretion of the commission on how they'd like to handle it, given there's low bidders. And at your table is also a provision of our city code, it talks about preference from all bidders. I believe it's five percent, um, for a project of this size. So, uh, Mayor, uh, I will turn it over to you, and, uh, it's the discretion of the city of who, of the city commission, who you would like to award that bid to. Comments from commissioners?
Um, other than, I, should I just, the question? Um, other, other than, um, it being the low bid, is there a reason to choose that?
I'm not familiar with boring in motion, I don't have any background with them, I don't know that the city's worked with them. I don't look at staff, I don't, they're new to me.
They're new to you.
They're not, they're new to everybody, but, uh, you know, it, um, there's no other information, no other reason.
Oh.
Mark, we do a lot of work with that. Boring in motion?
Not entirely.
No, I didn't, okay.
They're both from Ever.
I do know that.
I'm the advocate for, uh, wearing the bid to the in-town folks that pay property taxes to us every year, that pay income taxes to us every year, and that differential is made up by that very quickly. So my, my hope would be a resolution to approve the local Asoski's Carpet Gallery, but I think it's just fair to do as, whatever this commission wants to do.
Turn it over to comment? Is there a resolution, as written here, to have boring in motion receive the bid through the boring here? Hearing none? Is there a motion to have Carpet Gallery do the carpet here?
Support.
There's motion and support. Perfect comments? Did you support it? Any comment, thought? Comment or thought?
None.
There's a motion and support now? The motion is to approve Carpet Gallery. Okay?
Jackson?
Yes.
Backline?
Yes.
Backly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Thank you. Cool, appreciate it, I'm sure.
Technology Services, is it who we have here today to talk to about that? Tim. Tim, why do you want to take over another massive job? I think about that every day.
They're, uh, actually not that large, they're, um, approximately twenty computers. So right now, the, the six things, we, uh, cover about seven hundred computers, and about eleven hu, or sorry, seven hundred users, and about eleven hundred devices, alter out their organization. Um, they came to us, searched us out, um, we were, they, they had some issues that need to be addressed, uh, had a big firm come in, kind of do an audit of everything, and they, they filled a lot of things, and so they, uh, are really, uh, kind of scared on things. So, um, they, they came to our attention, asked us, you work with a lot of people, we do this every day. Um, in the beginning, when we started this out, um, we, we knew that, uh, everybody purchasing their homes would spend a lot more money than, uh, everybody coming together and, uh, cooperating and everything. So right now, that's kind of what we're going on. Um, walked through, a complete walk-through with them, uh, explained to them what we do, they know exactly, uh, who we are, and they really want us in there. So they were supposed to have their meeting to find out whether or not, um, they would approve it, but they got delayed last, uh, week because of the election, and so they're going to actually do it tonight. So. We were working on a permanent or a long-term solution, and, and right now, they want us to come in, and kind of plug a couple leads, like saying, give us a, give an estimate, and then we'll work on a permanent, uh, long-term solution, like we do with other agencies.
Mark, your thoughts?
Tim's talented, his team's talented, it doesn't surprise me that others are, are interested in. And I know, Mayor, you shared with me that sometimes difficult in, in the private sector, securing IP help. So, uh, it created a consortium, I think, in all, right?
Is there any chance of conflict of interest between Tim running ours, running theirs? Where is he versus people? They shouldn't be here, we blame, but they're out there, I mean, is there anything like that?
You know, the advantage is, um, once we get in there and we install, um, our, our software and everything, we can do a lot from over, and we don't have to actually go to these places. We, we cover a lot of area, um, helping will understand also, we're, uh, we're in Ever. Um, you know, we, we do a lot of pro bono work for some of the small, small agents in Over. But we do some, uh, work to help them out, just knowing, or if you're part of an agency, let's say you're Ever, PD, we help them out, um, usually with no issues. Um, when it gets to a larger agency, we come up with a different contract for them. One thing I do want to tell the commission is, is we don't spend any of the city's money on any of these sectors, uh, people. Uh, everything that they pay us is labor in our contract, everything else purchased, buy them, uh, directly at our cost that we get. Uh, we might purchase under the app, they pay us back, or we set them up with an account directly to go ahead and make purchases. So there's nothing that, that we take over for the, the city citizens to go ahead and pay. Uh, everything is out of their pocket. So I do want to get that clear.
But it's your advice that tells them what to buy. We give them a recommendation. Doesn't work, then theoretically, you'd be responsible for choosing your own hardware or software that you come and, come and...
We've done this long enough where we know, we, you know, we have, we have a good idea of what we, uh, have. We do with a lot of police agencies, so one of the issues down there is the police agency. Um, they actually run through our system right now to get us some dispatch, um, so, we might have to pay for it.
Questions, others?
Mayor, I just wanted to point out, based on a question you asked me earlier, that in this agreement, given it's two municipalities rather than private businesses, there is a easy out. Agreement to be terminated by either party, meaning either municipality, by sending a written ninety-day notice of termination, with or without cost. So if either municipality decides this is somewhat, it's just unwieldy, awkward, or doesn't work well, uh, there's your easy out.
Also, since it's another police agency, um, all our, our people are fingerprinted, background checked, uh, security training, all that, get through that. Um, we actually create a management control agreement with the police agency to do their audits, so we're, we're legally allowed to be in there and, and, uh, work on their security. So the same thing we do with, I forget what it's...
Is there a motion for the resolution on the agreement between Reed City and Big Rapids regarding information technology? Support, support, questions? Questions, anyone?
Backline?
Yes.
Backly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Jackson?
Mayor, in case you didn't notice, you need to sign it.
Do you want to sign the, sign one from them first, or?
It doesn't matter. If there's one signed by Reed City already...
There's not, there's not.
They're only, they're doing that tonight. Either way, we... Either way, we'll figure that out, Mayor, for you.
Public safety, the Deer Call. It's, it's quite a nominated sound, the call.
Mayor, the popular topic around town for days. Eddie, I'm bringing you a mic.
Wow! But I'd be happy to take a couple of hours. Hello. So I'm bringing the Deer Call to you a little earlier this year with just, um, a few changes. Um, looking over what we have, we're adding a couple sites. I don't know if you took the opportunity to read all of the survey responses. Not a ton of responses, but significant amounts of gear in the areas that did respond. So, um, I don't think that, uh, sorry, I'll say that again. I don't, I don't think that we're, um, would be anymore if we were doing the survey anymore, anyway. So, um, that's where I was going with that. So this year, we are looking to do approximately all of seventy-five, which would be a significant impact in the problems that appear of being booked, the traffic crashes, and the rain of landscape. Um, this DSA approved by resolution to you, then I would then be able to obtain permit from the DNR. Um, I mean, we're going about scheduling the time in which the calls would occur. I know there's specific questions that you might have about it. An ongoing issue every year. Bringing that early is a little difficult for, for me with USDA right now, because this is busy time for them in the DNR. I thought I was pointing there, right? So, um, I just, I wish I could have more information for you right now, other than what's, what's there. I wouldn't be able to tell you dates or...
But the DNR may not give us all seventy-five, probably?
They're, they may want us to start with fifty, and then work from there.
Are you confident for, uh, previous years, it's been, it's been higher than what we have?
It is higher, we're trying to make real impact. Um, I think fifteen to twenty-five over the last few years is kind of where we've been. We're also trying to incorporate some of the things that we have at the airport with the year, um, with the larger request.
If Ferris has invited us to use campus green break?
As long as all of the scheduling works out, yes. So it's during their break, but we need the resolution to sign the DSA, to then get the permit, and say, oh, we have availability to do it during the break time. I think we can make it work.
Would it help at all to have the commission send them a note saying we'd like to have seventy-five to the DNR, or they do what they want?
I think we, I mean, I'm happy to articulate the purpose we want. If you wanted to send the letter, that would be great. Um, I'm sure they're going to tell us to start with fifty, and then we can see if we can get to seventy-five. Um, the lower number of gear reduces the cost of the gig, I think. I don't know, I don't know much, it all depends on the effort, so. That's what I have.
Questions, other questions? Hearing none, is there a motion for the resolution authorizing the Deer Call?
So...
With the motion?
Support.
Support?
Backly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Backly?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. The resolution adopting a special event policy, uh, has been created, policy and work has been created by Chief Ames. Are you ready?
I'm ready. So, all of these wonderful events that we host in the community, or other, um, advocates who host in the community, are mostly planned by the event organizer. But there are a lot of details that come through, um, public works and public safety. So we have evolved from a special event for past applications that needed public safety acknowledgement, while we've got an event approval, and the things that just felt like sometimes they were being missed on initial process. So we put together a policy that would, uh, address what we feel covers all of those things that would be missing from, um, prior events, and made a very straightforward application, and a workflow process that gets approved. It would initially, um, through a public safety, we would approve it, and then send it out to, well, we would acknowledge, send to the other departments, and then get a final approval. There are certain events that would come before the commission, and others that would not be necessary, and those are listed on the policy. It's pretty lengthy, I'm not sure if you have questions, so.
I, no, I don't have anything, uh, to add, I'm happy to answer any questions. We feel like this is a step forward compared to our old system, uh, that left us with a quandary of how to handle artworks versus blackies versus others versus that we experienced in the not too distant past. So that's, uh, response to those issues, this is.
But there's nowhere in the policy that says somebody could unplug one thing, they plug something else in there. You know, those aren't all practical sense things, you know?
Those are difficult to handle, each and every one. Um, you know, I think overall, uh, there's many events that happen seamlessly. Unfortunately, we pay the most attention, as human nature would allow, to the ones who, that don't. And hopefully, these, uh, this tradition is the number that don't, by providing more detail, and in more timely manner. And I know fees are a part of that, too, because we've been maybe inconsistent on how we handled that over time, whether or not we did provide origin, or somebody asked, you know, provide it themselves. We've been trying to scatter shot on that, too, there. So this is a step towards trying to address all those.
Any questions regarding policy? My only question was, Chief Ames, when do you decide, decide that you should probably talk to the city manager about a given event? There's nothing about that in there, in, in...
To, to discuss with him? Well, on the application itself, there's copy two section that we would send that to him.
On every event?
On every event.
Do you get those marks?
He, he does not get those. And I know...
We had the question, my question...
We had the question, my question was, what if it's somebody wants to do an event that's, maybe the city commission would think, that's kind of off the wall. I don't know if we should really have, you know, army tanks running down the road. You know, the, all the things you're doing are, I understand, safety and whatever, but how about the political aspect of things that people want to do?
I think it's just one standard application and how they fall within those different liability of how we address it.
But let's say the, one of the stores, I don't care what kind, wants to close a block to have a, their own festival. If they meet all the safety requirements, then they can do it? Or do you have to talk to Mark, do you have to talk to the commission? Or how do you, how's that, that kind of data happen?
Well, are they having alcohol at the event? Then he's going to know about it, you're going to know about it. There's a whole lot of different questions that need to be answered before I can say exactly. I know I discussed it at our staff meetings and so on and on, but that's a lot.
Because they're kind of a challenge, right?
They are.
It's a lot of detail. You raise good points though, Mayor. I don't know.
Even the luckiest thing is just the temple, it's a private, private store wants to close the block. How would that get to the commission? Who would, there's nowhere in the application.
Unless they apply for.
Literally, right.
Our experience, I think, is what Danny's going or relying on for her comments there is that we don't really see that. We did, we did, but, you know, I think, you know, speak up, if I'm saying it wrong. I mean, I, we haven't had the individual business want to close very much in my career. I can say that. I mean, it's more of a community festival parade type of thing.
So would artworks be considered a private or a business?
That's a good question.
Because they wanted to close the block.
Oh, they had alcohol too, which would come to the commission. But what if they didn't? Is, I think essentially your point is, you know, pick one, wants to close it, just do whatever they might want to do that wouldn't trigger the higher end scrutiny. Is that a good thing? I don't know where that, you raise a good point. I don't have all the answers. Yeah, I don't have, I think that that, we haven't had that happen is our answer, but I'm not sure that's good.
But in the new policy, every application goes across Mark's desk, is that what you said?
Not across his desk for approval, but until he copied out his DNR.
That's what I mean. He would see every one of them. So he would take the he if. The minute he felt that.
Yeah, it wasn't.
A pro.
I think that's accurate, Mayor. I think that's accurate and I welcome that responsibility. I trust this scrutiny, but I know Danny really, really gives these attention. And so I trust.
I question, I question a lot of things, so.
Yeah, she does.
But kind of what, you know, your director doing a policy? I'd like to have an answer and.
Mrs. James? You helpful with that mic? She doesn't have it.
No, I don't want that mic.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll put it on the chair. I don't like it. Just because you have had a situation come before you, I don't think you should stop seriously thinking about it. In today's world, so many things are coming up. If you let store A close a block one week, we've got store C maybe that wants it the next week. You're going to close your town. You've got to have. And the way that I kind of understood it, it was like community events that took in the whole community, not a municipality. I think really that, in my opinion. We need to really look in the future and have something.
I think we're trying to, Rosemary. You raise a good point, just like the mayor does. And the nuance of that is, do you think an artwork scale is a community event? Or does it, is it there to benefit one?
To fund race art?
Yeah, that's where, I don't know that you're going to weed out all of that in a policy exactly, but we can keep taking a swing at it.
The other one proposed is much better than what we.
Just for clarification, the way I read this is that all of the requests the data would have to be presented before it could be approved. And then it still adds a discretion of. City to approve. So just because it comes before with all the information, doesn't mean it's going to get a blanket approval. Like all factors would be raised. So it's not the perfect stopgap, but it's also not like an open season. I'm closing down our shoot.
It helps give criteria to what is necessary to have an event where we didn't have that before. The availability, if they, if they do what is necessary and availability is there, it's not for us to pick and choose, certainly, but the cost of that.
Do I hear a motion of approving the new special event policy?
Support.
Will you support further questions? Hold on.
Backman?
Yes.
Backman?
Yes.
Epley?
Yes.
Epley?
Yes.
Next grant. Resolution regarding the Spark Grant for the Depot Park market. Mayor, I would like to say about both of these grant applications that I have, in June will have worked for the city for twenty years. And certainly, we've talked about the depot for that long. And I would, I would go out on a limb that we have had on our radar talking about this retaining wall for almost that amount of time. So having both of them on the agenda at the same night with the idea that we're going to be able to make improvements is a landmark kind of opportunity as far as I'm concerned. So the Spark Grant is a new program for the DNR. It's a byproduct of the surplus COVID funds that they have sixty-five million, I believe, dedicated to park recreation projects. It's over the whole state, both the elements. And there's going to be three rounds. The first round is fifteen million. Second round, I believe, is twenty-five, and then the third is twenty-five. And the really unique opportunity here is you can apply for a million dollars. Because the access for, for park and recreation funding improvement for grants has always been to be in our trust fund. At one time was five hundred thousand, then it went to four hundred thousand, and now I think it's three hundred, it's three hundred and four hundred, it's low. And for, you know, just our depot park project is over a million dollars. So the Spark opportunity is really something that I think could make this project a reality that could get it done for us. That along with the custom buying and renovating the depot is just, is fantastic for all of Big Rapids. So what you have in front of you is the resolution to apply for the first round of Spark, which is coming right up. Our match, our total project is one, one million nineteen, I think, thousand. I'm not seeing it right above it, under me here. And then our match is a hundred thousand. So we would be applying for a grant of nine hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. I think we're in a fantastic position to get it. Whether we get it in the first round, second round, third round, we may, whether or not we have to come back to you if we aren't successful the first. That's something to, we'll have to figure out. But this is a critical step in getting that depot project, depot trailhead project done, and I wholeheartedly recommend it to the commission.
Other questions? When is it going to end that there's sixty-five million every time we hit around?
Some point will last.
It was never there before, no. It was like.
Motion for the, to support the Spark Grant application for Depot Park.
Support.
The motion is support. Further questions?
Backman?
Yes.
Epley?
Yes.
Downther?
Yes.
Dunther?
Yes.
Eric, have you ever seen an environment like this where we're applying for and getting huge grants all the time?
Not all the time, but there have been periods in which we, that Big Rapids has been very successful in applying for grants and more were discovered. But I would say this is the peak.
The folks from the Housing Commission are still here because they're afraid their houses are coming, come, tumble down into the Meskeen River. We are.
Just wait and see what happens.
He starts shit almost there. This resolution is.
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in there. Thank you. So again, been a long time coming and we have been, I think maybe why we have it, as, when I say we, is, is staff in the Housing Commission have been, we've been just set back in our heels because of the overall scale of this project. I mean, it, it maybe wasn't one time one point five million, now it's two point five million. That, those numbers, we just haven't ever had an opportunity to think about how we could be able to pull this project off. More grant funding there is Eagle has a program for slope stability, high water events. I'm not sure if we did it perfectly, but I'm not sure that we don't. And we really think we need to jump at it. A one point five million dollar grant. When, where, how can, I mean, they're just not available very often. We have a project in which if the city shares at the amount of five hundred thousand, the Housing Commission shares, we really could potentially pull this off without massive burden to either one of our agencies. So I think we'd be crazy not to go after it. Will we get it? I guess time will tell if the commission authorizes the application. But I mean, it's obviously a problem and you can't look at it. You've all seen it firsthand, you've seen it on the screen. You can't, something's got to be done and we think this is our chance.
So Mark, if we say we didn't get the grant, we don't have to what five million dollars? Probably Housing Commission, although, you know. But then what happens? Does Eagle just let them fall into the river? They don't care, is that the idea?
I don't have a good answer to that. I, I wouldn't, I don't, I can't speculate for what Eagle. I know Eagle is a, they react to what we ask or apply for. I don't, I haven't seen a time in which they come and audit the city and say, you know what, you guys ought to fix this, this and this, and here's the style. I haven't seen that. They, they rely on us to identify our needs, apply to them through the permitting process and then, you know, grants may fit in there as well. But a significant portion of this working is a grant, or I mean, is a permit from Eagle, as you heard about from Eric Seagull who was the last. So there are a number of unknowns.
This was put into, for really Great Lakes shoreline preservation.
Yeah.
You know, all the erosion from, as the mission went out for here on.
Right.
Not for individual livers, the retaining walls.
Right. It may not be a perfect fit. How many places are going after it? I couldn't say. I don't know. Sometimes these, I mean, that's the benefit of having professional engineering staffs that we work with and, and the benefit of having a grant person on staff to be able to dive into these. And not a lot of places do. And I mean, I think you'd find that they may or may not be overwhelmed with applications for this particular one because it's kind of under the radar maybe a little bit. And maybe our hope. So two hundred feet? They said they would only permit two hundred feet because that's what's existing. They don't like sheet piling walls. That's not environmentally kind of what would be allowed. But they had told us they would let us replace what's there. But trying to do hog, Eric, has told us what we really need is more. And so it goes farther, so what, how that all comes together? Whether we can do some sheet piling and then just, you know, a bunch of folders and that kind of stuff. But that's, then we'll have to work through the permitting process and figure that out. And maybe they'll say, I am, okay, two hundred and fifty, but no more. I don't know what they'll say. But they've told us right now, you can replace what you have.
Other questions? Is there a motion for the resolution to support the grant application for the Meskeen River Slope Project?
Support.
What question?
Epley?
Yes.
Downther?
Yes.
Dunther?
Yes.
Backman?
Yes.
Before we go to the work session, let's do unscheduled business as it's listed there before. Any unscheduled business, anybody on the commission or public want to bring forth? During none, we'll move into a work session to talk about our city manager evaluation process. Aren't they removing?
We are. We're over there. Dan. Dan, Dan, Dan. Come all the way back? Do we come back here? I'd love to help you.
And if there's a question, we can make it. I would love to make it, so we end up at the.
Depot.
That's a great idea. Great. Ride, ride the last few miles up the newly seen.
How far can you drive?
So how far do you guys drive? What's the longest you go? Sixty hours, is that a big number?
No. Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, let's do it. Let's do it.
Thanks for telling. I think. I like it.
Yes, you are.
You better do it before you retire. Don't you defend your career.
I may not, I may not buy them. Just means I'm going to.
Let's zoom in and talk about. The group was appointed, how long ago, you guys?
Well, here's.
Anyway, you're back. And with your work.
We're reconstituting. Yeah, just real quick.
Oh, this is. See how it goes.
Did everybody need coffee or something?
Yeah, I do.
I don't have.
I'm sure they're having a lively conversation. Quick recap, just bring anybody up to speed. So we're talking about the cost by which we are going to be evaluating its commitment, which I believe, I'm not aware that you didn't have ever done that.
I have nothing to do with that.
No, you know, a different.
I had it that way.
No, I know you. So real, real quick, real quick.
Start, you should try it.
I didn't know what she meant, yeah.
Quick history. I think, I remember that twenty nineteen, the commission determined that the. Quick history. I think about remember that twenty nineteen, the commission determined that the four that we were using rather well than the other. On a variety of levels. Number one, the gap between the two county had no evidence today from the valuation on the trees, so it's. Structured self-evaluation part of it. And it's just really not an good opportunity for self-approval feedback in going to both. So we, we formed a small sub-community which at the time was their home of senior and Mr. Howard. And did a bunch of research on what ought to go into a good evaluation process, particularly for a council manager's own evaluation. Um, we pulled out, I'm thinking Mr. Howard and myself, we pulled out a bunch of different evaluation forms from municipalities around the state and. How finding the state and we looked at the custom, the steel load types areas, which seem to be bothering the council and. And other things that were similar. Unfortunately, that was late twenty nineteen, it was from twenty twenty. And just we did more than we should and so that particular deposit got high lying. So we decided, as we know, not too long ago, we're still in that mode that we need a better system. And so, which our dump and I have been working on, um, on that, that open notes. And so what, I put together for you, and the purpose of this meeting is two goals, we want to discuss the importance of an evidence-based system over time for evaluation. What constitutes a system, uh, is often for how we create that system and evaluate it with efficacy and the necessary planning commitments involved. And one added bonus that we have now is that Mr. Howard shared with, uh, Mr. Johnson and myself, the online system. Uh, the city has started using, which enables us to customize our recording system. So I'm, I may be referring as to him to step in and let us know what's possible and so forth. Um, and at some, this is a point, I would like Melissa to give us, all of us, um, the same demonstration of these things that she showed to me and that I saw. Because, um, I really think if, if the fact that it is customizable is going to enable us to really. Be fair enough, criteria we want to evaluate what kinds of evidence we're looking for, uh, how that can be accomplished. So my goal here is for us to be able to create a sustainable system that will go beyond this particular commission. And that will very, we come and go. But ideally, well, the commission is committed to doing this work and it needs to be, um. A system that will be sustainable, that can be predictable, uh, give good evidence and quantitative feedback and so on. So this document that I've provided for you is meant to be a foundation to start this discussion. Nothing is written in stone here. We haven't even done anything. We are just, uh, while Ned and I are putting this forth for your consideration and for conversation. Why are we doing this? In a council manager form of government, this is really one of the critical roles of the city council commission. To have a good working relationship with the city manager, understand his responsibilities, still support you. As you know, and you kind of see it from the role division graphic, there are some clear areas, um, in the city manager business versus commission business. And then there's, there's a little bit of overlap in the area. But if you talk about this and we all are clear about it, um, it helps us to determine how this process goes forward. This is really, like, the, the city manager's, uh, relationship is an important aspect of our responsibility as a city commission. Because his goals are tied to our goals. And what we want to have is a good conversation about what those goals are. How deep you're in them, what challenges seem to be happening within them, and what our function is in making sure that we're giving you aspects of work coming back there. So, uh, in other words, we can say that the city commission helps to establish the city manager's gravity as a subject. How we define it. Important point here, uh, and I know we've had this conversation a little earlier on, talking about performance evaluation. Performance evaluation should be constructive, providing not only examination of afterthought, but guidance for future efforts by the city manager. They are not meant to be communicative and should never be used as such. Rather, they should provide substantive, evidence-based feedback, which includes acknowledging, highlighting, any success or achievement. And well, identifying areas that may need improvement. In addition, because there is kind of a two-way street here, an effective process can help the commission examine and improve on its own performance in achieving its goals. For example, are we providing third direction about our needs, goals and priorities? Are we fulfilling all the law of the policy making bodies? Are we committed to involve in the day-to-day administration? Okay. Um, as I said, there are some areas that belong to the city manager and staff. There are some areas that belong to the government. Now, our area is more mission and policy, the area area is more institutional management, but there is understandably some vague cost areas. Okay, so in, wow, then I'm basically. You see five different areas here of what a manager's evaluation accomplishes. Number one, process of planning, reviewing and providing feedback on his performance. A means of demonstrating organizational accountability to citizens, employees and local stakeholders. A means of maintaining alignment between established city commission goals and the achievements obtained. A means of determining the need for any further professional development, education or training. And last but not least, an element for of decision-making you already need to profit base. These five important areas that this process does. Two important, uh, fundamental aspects that need to be accounted for in any of this that managers are part of the evaluation. And the first is the what, what they call a technical aspect, uh, results that should be accomplished. Hence efficiency and effectiveness, which the city established goals, which tends to act as a basis to track from this aspect. And the reason we have a whole here. Achieving goals and objectives in our strategic, uh, fiscal establishment, public relations, advocacy. Um, and we will talk about whatever, it's also like everything. The other is the how, which is a little harder to sometimes evaluate, which is behavioral, uh, leadership skills that should be demonstrated. And the personal, um, and other subjective factors, not always easy to define, not very, not easy to. Um, measure. Uh, which is why, you know, in the substance of meeting, one of the things we need to do is, you know, talk about the criteria that we're going to want to evaluate. That's how we work to evaluate it, what kinds of evidence we're going to be looking for, how that can be provided and so forth. Multi common challenges managers and missions face with the process involved around four general areas. A failure to undertake evaluation, lack of credible appraisal, a lack of understanding of the council manager's own government. And a lack of community participation. So we are going to endeavor to avoid and avoid having, having a feeling. Um, a critical part of the self-evaluation process is the city manager's self-evaluation as part of the evaluation process. It is absolutely essential that city managers voice feedback in this process. Clearly, on this, many duties, many responsible meetings, you can engage in many projects, other activities over the course of the year. Um, his self-evaluation will provide necessary data for the commission to make an informed decision on the criteria of the examination. And will provide them with the information they need to debate the summary of activities that you also don't require happy here. This evaluation also provides them the opportunity to discuss things that may have a season ability to complete any given task or project and what may be further needed from task. Needless to say, um, with any given year of these certain things and, uh, now in the last couple of years, particularly these programs and there's still. Supply chain issues, there's a lot of problems, there's still, I don't know, increased labor costs, there's a real cost. Even, even things like getting Eagle for this, you know, are things that, that the city manager that we have control over, that they would, they can see, I believe, some of that. Okay, so you want to take this as.
Yes.
I'm gonna turn this over to my, she's gonna go through it with you. Um, this is what we are proposing.
Yeah. Uh, so there will be two parts to the city manager's evaluation. Um, the first part is keeping a running log, uh, electronically over the course of the year. The commission as a whole will have read-only access, which we can then utilize to stay informed and up to date on what is on the plate. And if a concerned citizen comes to us with a question, say, hey, I never heard back about this, we then have access without having to. And if we read it on the week, we'll kind of know what's going on. Um, we, we wouldn't have to just rely on what's most outside town, so that we can, if it ends, then always. We'll have kind of a running log of what you're doing, um, you know, what the process is, uh, for accomplishing. The, I don't know. Those are all. Those are the first. Um, the second part is a written summary of the activities at the end of the year. Uh, we would recommend moving the evaluation dates to the end of June, which would coincide with the end of the fiscal year and March month anniversary. Which I believe the city has, um, moved most of their evaluation to their work anniversary.
Right, yeah. So I would kind of follow. Yeah, it got changed to January because that's when political version of the position. So to evaluate that, so just explain that part, that probably got shifted to January four.
Um, below are some suggested areas for the city manager's log entries. Um, citizen complaints and follow-up action. So the city manager will keep the activity logs, daily, weekly, monthly basis as needed to pass citizen complaints or concerns. Um, and any actions that were taken by the staff for a revelation. It will not only establish a pattern or trend on how we handle community relations, but it will highlight any strengths or weaknesses that we may have. Which can then be applied to improving. Community relations. So again, uh, the commission should have access to this information in order to provide response, direct responses to the citizen. If you kind of have to get an email and page the page at our office. Um, and using this log also acts as that the city manager and staff from unfounded accusations by the public is going to be a record we have to say. Not only to be here, just complaining to these, and actually taking. And other citizens, the person who's being sued is not taking action. Um, uh, we have access to this, to kind of defend, um, and access.
Um, there's some, there's some, there's some, one of the things we said in the city government, which is. And, um, this kind of, this kind of record system goes a long way to anyone that sees what, what's going on, how it's going on. But again, it also, it also can impact these, uh, then, then you get emails with pirate feedbacks, uh, you know, there's. Maybe there's some type of questions like, how is this, well, this is everywhere. I've talked to everybody and nothing has been done. Oh, and we go along with it. Well, that company has, uh, some of those, some of how it makes sense with it as well. It is works both ways.
Um, the city manager should establish a good outline of people information to present to the commission for weekly meetings, one-on-one meetings. To better keep all commissioners equally informed. This would speak to the superiority of the major commissioner relations. It's suggested that the commissioner's meeting packet is a good starting point, but it should be supplemented with any other pertinent information. Or developments. If new information arises after our one-on-one, because we will be all kinds of, we will be using kind of just today, kind of today. Um, the city manager should then update the logs where there's more urgent matters, kind of directly, but. It would take kind of some of the burden off of the city manager considering that it's, it's just all in one, it's easy access to it. The city, the city manager should provide a monthly progress and financial reports to keep commissioners better informed of the financial resources available for agenda events being voted on. Um, the idea behind this one is that we're provided with that annual budget, but. The numbers need to fluctuate and there are ways to make them fluctuate. This would allow us to be better informed on the day we're voting on something, precisely how much money is available for and if this fund may be moved. It's never a question around the public or, it's just more information to keep us aware of it. Um, the city manager should provide monthly updates on any progress and obstacles with implementation of a strategic plan in community development. With using the daily, the monthly logs, um. This information, what we do here is compile. I believe this is, is, will there be a tool for him to compile information in that system?
This is journal entry.
Journal entry.
I can show, that's what I refer to as this little entry. Um. Being that, you know, this is, you know, a little bit more than we talked about, more some things that I would have mentioned. Type thing, but, but, um. It's part of the monthly financial stuff I had mentioned, you know, Chicago, but I didn't know exactly what you guys were looking for, I thought it was something that.
For people.
Yeah, I mean, I know in my mind, I didn't, I didn't have to be, I don't know, you know, on that, you know, on a monthly basis.
Well, Carla's communication with the commissioner or the treasurer is a, is quarterly by actually.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I don't think it's quite got to do with Carla yet, but I know we've had her, her nice talk.
Yeah.
Exactly.
The idea behind saying, you could let it ours, it could be that. Um, but, you know, like, you could request it of Carla if it arrived to us and.
Right, right.
Right, and if there's something that you want to.
I don't think you're gonna see it change much, uh, the monthly, right, financial, maybe the budget. Maybe, but. I'm not really gonna see it. You're not gonna see a uptick or downtick necessarily in the business finances. We're not gonna change that. It's a period of time.
Do you have to think that in quarterly?
Well, that's what we, historically, I, yeah, I, I would think it would be more of a quarterly type of thing, but. You know, I don't know, I believe Carla and I would have to work together on what.
Is this something that, so, when you're running down like, um, kind of how I have to check the account numbers. That I course, okay, there's a account number, the account number comes from here, there's a bunch of money in here, well, if it's under, under five thousand dollars, which, where does that come from? That might, for us to be able to look at those numbers and decide, it's, it's, you know, to ask the follow-up questions, to kind of better have an understanding of. Where the monthly pension.
Right, which is, I think they're always a great thing to do when you're done.
Right, right.
I just don't know if that makes itself a real easy law. Like, or they, or monthly log, and that's more of like.
That was, um, like, more of like, some, the idea behind the monthly is if we're approving a lot of funding out of the. The side block. Various accounts, to see where our balances are, say we approve three or four different projects, how would we work the balance of this, moving money to that location. Um, that was the thought. Um, that was the thought behind that. And the idea behind all of these logs is that, um, with the progress and obstacles that are being recorded, for any of the projects we're trying to work on, if, if it's weekly or monthly or as needed, like, as you can imagine with eagle, if some, an entry is made, you can, we, you would, we can actually very come to us and, we sit in there, we can tap at this. We have that information, um, or when you do provide a monthly, you kind of update on what's going on with public work. You have one source to pull all the information from. It's already in there, you just have to compile it and you'll, shoot for a little, this is what we've got going on right now. Um, if you want to put it on, okay.
Um, so. This, this process is, um, is something that the commission needs to be, um, we need to, you know, and I don't know, I'm gonna ask, you know, also where the system can kind of help us with this, I don't know, anything along, but, um, obviously, we all need to do some other discussion, the criteria, especially are across different categories of, of his responsibilities, if I asked you something. Um, we want to determine the criteria that we want to evaluate them on. And again, um, I think you mentioned that there was some, did you have any of them in the system or?
See, you have some tabs, all that stuff that you can kind of go from, but you're not.
You know, we are mentioning the real life, by our own rights.
Yeah, I think so.
So, I mean, there are tools to help us with, with this stuff, but what is important is that we have to talk as a group, determine the criteria. Particularly, we want to talk about the kinds of evidence we need to be able to make informed judgments. You know, one of my big problems with the previous form was that there were many items on their old memory. I had a jury that I had seen, I didn't have the evidence for, or how could I possibly, you know, do anything for? Um, and part of that evidence is, is going to be the journal keeping, you know, and the continual, continual log stat. That enables us to see the activity over the year. Uh, and I'd say the study, I've got what we're imagining with a read-only access, uh, I don't know how that works. We don't, we don't wanna have to, we don't need the power to edit it, that's why.
Right, yeah, and that I run it.
Yeah.
If we get, if we get a phone call at night, we just log in, look at it, see what's going on, and say, okay, here's your update, phone call, yeah.
So, what was I saying?
When you log, but it's not that time yet.
Let me get to that, let me get to that, yeah, okay. Um. In order, you have a thing that we need to determine is, is a rating scale, you know, what constitutes actual, above average, average, and so forth. What kind of scale do you want to use? Um, we need to talk about what difference is, excellent difference from above average to point, from average to points. I have, believe me or not, you know, believe it or not, like, I had done this project for forty thousand, creating an instrument, you know, that's pretty hard. It takes work upfront, but once you get it done, you know, the good system is real difficult and even to do it. You know, the upfront work is the hardest part, but really, it's important for us to be, have some sense of understanding for our clients so that our data isn't a very collective body. Um, you know, go through the elements required for the self-evaluation and make sure that you're doing all that. Um, this can work, you know, just as we did with our, uh, about quarterly reports, we can establish a timeline for log entries that makes sense. And ideally, we're still gonna have all the work. Um, and of course, we would need to follow the people who live in our minds to ensure that we can log in and use this and have access. And, you know, it should be, it is entirely up to you what you do at all. You know, my perspective on this is this is the responsibility of the commission to do this. I would like to hope that we don't all go into perfect to take, but often, in the following line, that's any individual, you know, you decide how often you want to spend the day or not. Um, when we do the actual evaluation, we should be consistent in what we assume upon, which criteria, rating scale, standing, etc. Um, and again, an important aspect of it is not just giving him a number and bringing him to that. And that includes raising him for the health, for all the diseases that are doubtful. And just kind of pulling it out there, you think, you know, everything needs work. Um, it's a dynamic system, you know, we are all part of the system. Commission, it's a dynamic system, it changes. We, we kind of go with the flow, but, but this is an important, um, duty of a city commissioner, that's part, part of a commission manager, that's why it's definitely, like, it's exercising, you know, it's really sort of, allowing people to do anything like that. We want him to have substance to operate on, good and, you know, wherever we can fit him. We want to make sure that we are establishing active path forward for him. And that, you know, we're, they're, are consistent with our goals and his goals are our goals, like, because he is responsible for helping us translate the new evaluation policy, and he is also responsible for the data base stuff. It's each other. It's a serious job, mission cases evaluation, very, very. And again, we need to, um, we have to some less of, you know, how to give us the translation of this thing. And I think it was part of both of them, you know, do open.
And, um, with the two points that I brought up before, those are just general suggestions on how we could collect data to analyze, to do the review of that. Whether it means that that has to be what it looks like, either just things that we came up with to throw out there if it's all respected. Um. Anybody who doesn't like anything on there, that's, that's fine, like, this is, this is just, hey, this is an example of something you could do.
So. Yeah.
And I've heard it twice before, and I'll today. It sounds like an awful lot of busy work to a city manager, all the logging stuff. For me, it would be impossible to back that up. That particular function seems like it's impossible, a busy work for a guy who's going in the city, to be logging it, every single thing he does and everything somebody says. And then I'm supposed to get in later and read everything he did. It just sounds like we're trying to micromanage him, and it, it doesn't, doesn't fall well with how our relationship would be. I think the idea of somebody writing on the phone about a complaint they wrote me to, that I would go on that, that computer thing and find what they said and what he said, and then I respond to them based on what that said? No way, we should be doing that. We should not be the one to do that, that's his job. We should call him the next day if you're gonna do this. Unbelievable. But call him and say, Mark, somebody called me last night and I read what you said, and he said, no, you should go. I mean, I don't think we should be getting into his business and then telling them what he said, she said. I don't love that at all.
No, 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 that's, that's not the point of this at all.
No, I mean, the point of it, the individual person, the center.
No, what I'm saying is, yeah, let me, let's, let's just put it out there. Um, we, we, we know that we've had reportedly a million or more complaints in the public this past year. And often what happens is because by the time I get the email from someone who has said to me, I talked to so-and-so, or they can't do this in this meeting, and they say, we've mentioned, you know, mentioned this several times and nothing happened. And sometimes that's true and sometimes that's not true. All this, we're not, I'm not looking for the heat that she said. We're looking for evidence that someone on the staff, and Mark often, well, very good, I think, he was in the commission reading about the record and where it needs to go, you know, that whoever's being responsible for that person, please. Um, so it, this is just a system to make that topic more transparent, for his benefit, for our benefit, and for the public.
But he's gonna be logging already and it depends on the problem on itself.
How we, how we manage the, the information, do they know there or not that, you know? And we're not saying we have to do it every time someone calls them up or, or, you know, or some solider just.
Well, he, so that doesn't make sense either, he has to do it or he doesn't have to do it, yeah.
A lot, we need to have the information that the complaint was attended by someone. How we, how we act at, you know, there, there's, there are very, very public people look at, you know, to streamline that process. This is just about accountability. And then we have, you know, if you have access to the log, you know, uh, you know, the example of say, we miss Orlando, and all that thing went around that, as opposed to someone being bringing a complaint about one thing at one time. You know, how, we can certainly talk about, we need to just figure out how the system can be used to facilitate that process.
I, um, the next one, I apologize for, for breaking in on what you were, the commission, um, over the discussion. But I just would like to insert that I believe what you generally talked about is going to be the records that we discussed before. So, just to remember that, because here's how some of this would likely come off. If citizens call to complain that the neighbor's cat howls too much, or the neighbor doesn't pick up the dog pieces, or any of those kind of complaints that we sometimes get, sure, the manager gets them, I get them. If he records those in terms of time, date, place, who called about whom, and that goes on, say, for a year, recording all of them with names, dates, places, and some member of the public decides that that's a, would be a neat log to obtain, see what the city manager's doing, then we'll be in the awkward position of just having to decide if we're authorized to your dat, names, or details, and probably can't. Those will probably still go out, we take out dates, various approach security numbers, and a few other things that, I don't think we can stop that. In short form, I believe whatever's created by the city manager, such as a log, would be subject to FOIA. So, the, the, the parameters of what you should record and what the commission might want to see recorded may have to be sanitized or thinned out or, you know, kind of crunched or scrunched. So that if somebody discovered it and it went to the pioneer for publication on the following day, it wouldn't be an embarrassment to the city or the community that, I'll stop. Meaning, that's the whole point, in a nutshell, and you guys just have to accommodate and resolve.
You guys, I didn't catch, I didn't understand. Is it all activities that he knows he should log in into this log? Like, today I'm talking to someone, and he's gotta log that in?
My interpretation of it was if we have someone who's following up with us every single week about a complaint, we need to have some kind of a record to, to uniformly be able to respond to that. Um, of what we're doing, we working on it, what's going on, but we're not just sitting there like, we're total in our clums and having to do it.
I'm talking about not unrelated complaints, I'm talking about everything he does. Should he have in his log saying, that was developer X Y D, and we talked about X Y D, he's gotta take that into? So that you guys can go back and read it?
Right, what, this falls within the category of when you look down to determining what criteria we're gonna evaluate them on, and what is the evidence that we need to evaluate.
That's what I'm trying to get at, and make it a feel for it.
Yeah.
I, I can tell you though, if, if Mark was to go to a different area and you're bringing in a new person, you knew, he's gotta write down everything that's, and everything they say. I wouldn't take that job, there is no way.
No, no, we, we.
That's kind of the way it's designed, it sounds like, and he has to write everything, and, and, boy, that doesn't give the manager much of a, of feeling of independence and strength and trying to do a good job, because he's constantly worried about, oh, the officials, or go on that hotline, whatever you call it, and read all my stuff, and it's like, I don't know about that, I don't think I'd take that job.
Yeah, the journal entry in Leo, um, which, you know, what I've learned is, I mean, you get out of it what you put into it. You know, as far as building the evaluation, what you want to get out of the journal entry, the journal entries are more designed for, um, supervisors to be able to go in and log something that, you know, Carla, you know, got auditing, you know, a word or whatever for the year, and Mark is going in and logging that on Carla. So then when he goes to do her evaluation, because it's proven that when you do an annual evaluation, you're really only graded on the last thirty, then maybe forty-five days. So that's what this journal entry has been kind of designed for, um, so when I set it up for regular employees, for, you know, the city, was that supervisors should be going in at least quarterly and logging a journal entry so that that would help them recall information when they would do that annual evaluation. I do have a supervisor who they, you know, log any different issues, they log empty positive, you know, they gotta, you know, compliment, you know, while they were at the grocery store on, you know, employee type thing, so they can go out and they can log the journal entry. That's more what the journal entry, my understanding of it, that that's what the journal entry is for, not necessarily, uh, to, uh, monthly, uh.
Since we're just simply monitoring.
We were, we were.
We were the ones.
You, yeah, that's, yeah. I got that.
Yeah, I don't know how, yeah.
So, yeah, so, I mean, so you could, you know, not with Mark to say, you know, discuss this one, whatever, this item was resolved, I think. Yeah, I would be more flipside.
We would completely have both conversations in our weekly meetings, right? And then I could do it.
Why don't you just get it on the system and you never have to have a face, face-to-face meeting with anyone? Just put it all on the. That's right.
I mean, well, that has nothing to do with replacing the meeting.
Oh, I, no, I.
No, no, no. I mean, I think it's helpful to have something to be able to recall, because I do, and it's just, we struggle to have the evaluation, employee evaluation taken seriously. Because it's dark.
Yes.
You know, the employees have to take it seriously, but then the supervisors have to take it seriously too. So I can appreciate, you know, the confirm and wanting to do something different, have it be something that's more constructive. Um, I've seen unfortunately where, you know, a supervisor might have an issue with an employee and they never address it. And so it's kind of time for that annual evaluation, and you're like, the employee's like, what? I thought I was doing a great job, you never said anything to me. So then to recount something that happened nine or ten months ago, I don't think that's fair either. So, you have to come to an agreement that something that's gonna be a middle ground, I feel, um.
Really makes me nervous to think that the commission members should, should get into this, whatever it's called, and review all this stuff all the time to make sure it's all legit, or what are we doing it for? Show me how it helps me with this evaluation.
It's like seeing what she just said, we can't remember what he did a year ago.
So you're gonna go back and re-read all that stuff?
My, out of my meetings, so, you know.
How are you gonna remember it then, when you read it on, in June, how are you gonna remember it for the next June? I don't think I can.
Yeah, go on the system.
Also, you're gonna have to reread all his comments for the year before his evaluation.
No, 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 I did promise, she's telling me about me as the supervisor, putting it all on.
Oh, oh, boy, oh, boy.
But then again.
This gets harder and harder, more and more complex.
Yes, yes. I like that earlier. Ultimately, I, I recommend this because it's. Ultimately, I'm, I'm recommending this because it is the beauty of the commission to give him substance and feedback.
Sure.
I can't make you do it. I'm, I'm, I will choose to do it because I believe in doing it, but I can't let you do it. And so you have to decide for your.
It's very complex.
You have to decide for yourself.
He's got to enter the stuff. I gotta read the stuff. No, I gotta somehow type something in to say what I think it was said. I assume that gets pretty cumbersome.
No, that, that's not, I mean, in honesty, I, what I'm hearing and if I'm, um. What I'm hearing about this log and some other things, you know, some of the questions, I, I don't.
Yeah, I think I misunderstood.
I think we both, yeah. Yeah, the journal entries are just a log thing to kind of help trigger things for a member thing when we do the evaluation. You know, when I think about, you know, running, you know, a log or something like that, I mean, you guys have one-on-one meetings. And, you know, staff has one-on-one meetings with their supervisors. And some of the things that we're supposed to talk about is what have you completed in the last week? You know, what are you working on? Is it anything that, you know, I may need from Harla or I may need from Mark when I'm struggling with it? You know, type thing. Um, and that's what you, you know, talk about. You talk about that a lot. And I know sometimes I'll get on with Mark and I'll say, hey, Mark, give you a heads up. I just got a phone call from another stressful person. You know, they said that, you know, they talked to everybody and this is unrevolved, you know, type thing. But, you know, I would know that with that. I just want you to be aware, this is what I'm going to be doing forward. But is that something that Mark then needs to log somewhere that I had that conversation with him that, you know, commission is aware of that situation? Yeah, I, I.
And that's, that's where, that coming together. Coming into this mission in June, there was, he was learning hard in those things. Most of, most of this was, how do you, that's realistically going to happen again in the future. If there is some kind of a log with the progress update of our, our strategic stance. And all of those things that are happening, moving parts of our business. And he's putting that in your digital portfolio. He talks to everybody. He's our full person on that information. If he has something in there and you have an intention of coming down, oh, maybe in the booth. Instantly by having access to that information without him having to have several hours plus long meetings with them or. But it's a good reference for, for the busy process. It was kind of a two-fold thing with the line of thought. Um, I really appreciate your perspective there. And I'm an insurance salesperson. I have to keep a little log of every transaction everywhere. Just to make sure that nobody says I said something that we say. So that was from my very data-driven analytical side. The practical element of applying that to a city manager is maybe that.
Very difficult.
I think, and I really appreciate that, that perspective. And, but from the flip side of it, having a spot where we have some of like. The bullet point update where you can reference that, maybe we do have the conversation. But mostly the conversations aren't, um, a written thing and we're also recording the conversation or have amazing instant recall. Where do you find that information without calling five people with a field information or calling up again? We have to, like, forty-five minutes.
I think, I think this is going to take many get-together. Because. I don't want to lose Mark or another future person if we have to sit long in many times.
Well, I think, I think we've evolved the best method.
That's certainly not my idea.
I, I think it would, it will be helpful if, if the rest of the commission gets a chance to see the system. And what it can do. Uh, it kind of could hinge into, into that context. Bottom line, and again, this would, this would tend to evoke discussion. And, you know, you raise some good points and we did, we didn't, we missed the point. So it's okay. Um, you know, I'm an evidence-based person. You know, and it's important, you know, for any kind of performance evaluation. Well, in academia, you know. I know, you know, good managers have, have the people be professional and do the fire. Right? And there are benchmarks. There are particular things that they're looking for them to work on as well as, again, knowing the good, the things that you're doing well. That's, bottom line is, well, that's, that's the purpose. The purpose is so that we don't, you know, someone else shoving a form in my face, reads it for us. And just, you know, circling a bunch of numbers which have no meaning. To Mark whatsoever, except that he knows five of them. He likes five.
I think we all agree with that, Jennifer. I like this a little bit.
Yeah, so all I have to say, I very much appreciate this feedback. Um, very helpful. I think perhaps maybe our next move would be to have, have Melissa do the demo for us. And kind of walk us through what's possible and look at the templates, if that's you.
Is that one we could do one-on-one with you? Or is that too much, three hours?
Um, I.
Cause I don't have any work sessions. We've got a lot of things coming up. So should we do what?
Yeah, well, I mean, I could do two. Um, I mean, if you were to have to play like a special meeting, if you're doing it after.
You'd have to do a special meeting. It's gonna be much more practical, even though it's gonna be troublesome for Melissa. But I mean, in some respects, that's like, it's right out of the air.
Two at a time?
One at a time.
Right.
If you work with Melissa to fit each one in, how long does it take Melissa for each one about?
Yeah, there's a couple of those.
An hour block, maybe, hour or less. And you only have five people, even if you did them again. So over two weeks, you ought to be able to find five hours to get five people through. And that can be done.
Oh, true.
Yeah.
It's really down to three each. Unless they need to redo it. I would strongly recommend you do that. I would also like to volunteer to meet with the commission, aloha, to have meetings with you two before you redo this. Um, there's two or three points to sort of have a legal side to it. That rather than like blurt it out here in the meeting, I'd rather walk through it a little bit at you. So you see how those things fit in there. And I have a few more ideas about that. Log that, that I just don't think it's worth to express here. But I'd like to do that for the two of you, if you would allow and if the commission will allow it. So we can do that at another time, not here.
Okay, so great for special projects.
Anything on a lot of anything?
I don't want you to get involved here.
Yeah, I have to be off.
She's probably got it loaded, right?
I, I wonder if we would be like NeoGum, six, seven, eight, and we log it. We either talk about our proposed.
Let's forget the law.
Or we need to do two separate things.
Forget law, you mean? I sure mean to say the word law.
Because I feel the way most of the staff, you know, the team back there, that is close and put it down, we're just doing the policy.
We're abandoning the law.
Yep.
It's.
Thing, it adds up to what we proposed. Up in your own market, but it doesn't necessarily, I mean, committing the evaluation.
And that's what we want to talk about, what do you need?
Yeah.
Or do you need?
All of the others.
Right.
That's a benefit to something, but I was concerned about that. All that would be FOIA.
Most people always want to know.
And it's starting with the developer.
And. It's kind of like Facebook.
That's, that's a good start. So, and, and what would be, what would be recorded on the CDO we want to? He may have one hand, he may have another, he may have another hand. That's a lot of opinion for, for a lot of, I don't know.
Here's Jennifer Settler.
Yeah.
Scary to me. Candy, is there somewhere written down what the exact goals and expectations of the commission are? No, uh, say, in our strategic planning document? I think words. But I haven't seen them. Well, no, like goals and objectives for the year.
Well, that's, yeah, yeah.
Strategic planning, but.
And it's a whole project, it's not.
Right, they're projects.
Yeah, and what you guys be doing again probably.
But that doesn't, that doesn't fit well with the manager evaluation project.
I don't know, when I hear that, I follow up like, how important have they been like?
Yes.
In their office, they have all this stuff. You know, written in our document, things are completed, it comes off. And I'm there watching the street on the day. You know.
I mean.
You know, like, hey, and then you guys.
You've worked on the depot for twenty years.
Yeah.
And they're gravel streets for at least that. And these projects aren't. They're not weekly, monthly.
To wrap up some of them done?
Well, I know, I'm saying, you're not gonna track that over any.
To wrap up, we're gonna have a meeting, ever meetings with Melissa to see what that system is.
Um, yeah, what I, what I would like to see you all to be thinking about while you're going through this is, you know, for your own self. What do you, what do you, what kind of information do you need to be able to get an appropriate feedback? Are you thinking about that in your own, you know, there will be.
Kind of like instead of that, a running log and a written summary?
I know, right?
A running, a running, like, instead of that. What would each commissioner put in that blank?
Yeah. Yeah, 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 exactly.
I like the idea of knowing exactly what each commissioner's pulled up there at their meeting with you. I don't think they want that, I think.
But just to link it, like, bullet point, this is, these are the part critical thing.
He could have, he could have a pre, uh, pre-press just fill in the blanks for what he's talking about this. He has a little list one, you two, there's our little sticky one.
Yeah, he does.
He uses sticky.
When we first started doing O three, after we had, we both, we had probably talked about, we talked, told us to do, uh, an agenda. You know, so I don't know if that's something.
Yeah, an agenda. Oh, yeah, we had pretty extensive. I mean, that's the.
That's the stuff that's coming to the, okay, so you put in other things that we've got that aren't on the specific agenda. You know what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
I fast believe that there's other things. So maybe if it's not, if you won't form, I was thinking about, so I feel there.
Well, we are with it the other day, Ben. Look at he's gonna be all mad.
No, I'm not gonna be all mad.
The commission's office is the agenda. That's the, that's the commission's office.
Yeah, and in the back there, so he goes through the junk out of the room.
Everybody.
And then they're individual, they belong on whatever policy you want to talk about.
And that's where it's, which is where I'm at.
Not where I think.
Right, where we think.
And then who did, who talked about it?
Yeah, for sure. The only, the only thing that is, is consistent that, that's relevant is the agenda.
Right, right, right. I think the main thing that you need to allow five of us on the week. I'll bet there are a lot of cities that don't do that.
I was surprised when I came out and was, I was like, happy surprise.
Yeah.
Um, and I know. I really appreciate, I'll call you out here. I really appreciate, yeah, in a positive way. Um, when there are things that you see forecasted in the future, like. Hey, that's maybe coming down the pipe in another month or so. FYI, it should be. I really appreciate that. And that was more towards what that was, like, hey, if there are, like, you have a list of them. Yeah, cause there's still no reason that we want to be independent of digging.
If you notice, each one of us, that, that, that half of the focus is on more of this.
Yeah.
And I'm interested in the developments in the land and the this and the that. And I got, oh, this could be careless, what that, they're more interested in the people's stuff or whatever. So.
You've changed, I'm sure you changed how you talk to us based on what we want to hear.
A lot, you know, anybody who has a chance, anybody that have five different conversations.
And that would be my only concern about meeting with everyone who did, I mean, obviously, you know, people are gonna have different questions. Interpreting differently or, but at least that way I can at least show it once.
Once you show, once we'll go here and one of you.
You know, ten, ten or whatever, five, you know, a word question.
Yeah, or do it, especially you. Don't, you don't want to go through all that stuff first. Just come in at seven o'clock and just do it, or do you? And we can do it, right, Candy? That's the goal if we do it again. That way these guys wouldn't have. Hey, no.
No, that's what I mean, I mean. You know, I, I mean, that's what you.
That's a, that's a, I'm not sort of telling everybody the exact same thing. Right, this is what you're saying, this is what you're saying, yeah. Thread here that I'd like to point out, I may not be accurate in it. But if the desire for more information from the city manager, more, more information about what the city manager hears from other members of the commission. And what the city manager knows about this doing city manager, that's probably not really the manager's job. That's probably a city commission function where the commission needs to be looking at how to share communication within the commission. More effectively at the public meetings though, huh? There may be a way to enhance that. I don't have the explanation for it. I gotta think more about it, but.
You know, because bottom line, each of us individually, based on arguments that have been raised. You'll have to determine what it is that we need to be prepared for the meeting. And on, and that's on us, of course, to ask the questions. We'll make sure that we get any questions that we have answered, you know, in our one-on-one.
Do you all, how have you ever had a receipt to copy of, you know, of, you know, these, that?
I think it's good.
Just to resend it?
No.
Maybe you ought to, maybe you ought to dust it off and pull it out for people to at least access it already.
Yeah, yeah, I'll send that. Is it different than what is, I think it's a lot more. Yeah, well, it's in the charter.
Maybe we should be looking at it at the same.
You only got two more days there.
Two more days?
You, two more days?
Oh.
So what?
No, he doesn't.
Five weeks?
I don't know, it's getting down there. We stopped listening during that for about two.
Okay, so, uh, I can send that out tomorrow. Obviously, you have, and actually, I mean, there's, you know, with you, if there's questions concerning.
We have to chew numb this, this topic. That's why we're gonna start now. Well, slowly. I think it's a lot of chewing on. Three times, which is very rare.
I think though, this may lead to some other better discussions about the role of the commission, the manager and the information flow. It may be helpful beyond the scope of evaluating Mars.
Well, that was a good.
It goes for the territory, I know.
Thank you, everybody, for your, that was very, very helpful.
Yeah, just.
There are anything.
No, I. I just don't. I need a log.
For a turn.
Eight, twenty-nine.
That was a good one.
If I get a complaint, every time you call.
I saw that, I know.
That made it salt?
It doesn't. There's a couple more. I got it covered.
But there's a round of. Right, but that's not gonna stop. In today's.